Good evening, everyone. If everybody can please rise. Eric, why don't you come on up here? Eric, would you be so kind as to lead us in the pledge? Thank you, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, Eric, I see that you are a Boy Scout. What troop are you from and why are you here with all of us tonight? And thank you so much.
I am from Troop Thirty-Nine, and I'm here because it's part of a requirement for the Communication Mirror badge.
Terrific. What school do you go to?
I do Seminole County Virtual School.
Good for you. Well, welcome, Eric. We do appreciate it, and thank you so much for leading us in the pledge this evening.
Thank you.
Chief. Just push Chief Chud now out of the way. Don't worry about it.
He's got all his Batman tools on tonight, I'm afraid.
I'm not even going to touch that. So many things.
Good evening. If you'd like to join me in a word of prayer, please do so at this time. By God, we're thankful that we can gather here tonight. We thank you for our elected officials and those that always contemplate seat office, Lord. We know that it's a special endeavor to do this. Lord, we thank you for the blessings you bestow on this town and keeping us safe and for every person in this audience tonight for the special award recognition that we're about to administer by council to our guests. Lord, that you would bless them, their families, give them good health. I pray this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Chief. Well, as I said earlier, everyone, good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the meeting to order. It is Monday, April 4th. It is a little bit after 6:30. We have all members of council present. Our first item on our agenda this evening is ceremonial item, and this is one that we just love to do because we have the Oviedo High School girls, 2016 soccer state champions with us. And guys, wait until you hear the accomplishments of these young ladies. So council, if you can join me down in front of the dais. As I said, this is the fun stuff that we get to do when we get to recognize the youth in our community. But let me take a moment first to introduce their coach. Now, this is the state girls' soccer champion, and I'm going to tell you a little bit about them in a moment. So Coach Scott, why don't you come on in first and be recognized? Give this man a big round of applause. Now, wait until we hear this impressive list that was just given to me. In the last six years, the Oviedo Girls Varsity Soccer Team has won three state titles. They have been to six Final Fours in the last nine years. During that time, Oviedo has three titles. They've been the runner-up twice, five times in the finals. This one gets more impressive. In the 2015-16 school year, the team's overall record, 21 and 2. Nope, it gets better. Fifteen of those were shutouts. Ninety-five goals scored, only 12 against. That is impressive. So let's give them a big round of applause. Now, Coach, we like to recognize each young lady, so why don't you come on up here? I'll hand the microphone over to you.
Mayor Pessanti, and council, thanks for having us tonight. It's a pleasure being with you. First, introduce my assistant coach, Bill Barker. My confound, we bounce things off each other. We've been on this journey together the past 11 years as a team, so he's an integral part of what we do as well. So I'll start with our freshmen and introduce them. Guys, come on in. Ally DeRose, Katie Edwards, Avery Noack, our sophomores, Reagan Massey, Sidney Brown, Kenna Hildenman, Samantha Lambert, Tessa Simmons, our juniors, Eric Nicholson, Maddie Bizaco, Camille Coppafite, Dana Laner, and Carly Mitchell. And our senior class, Jacqueline Zepay, Andrea Maschil, King Loa, Alex Noack, and Laura Day. And Mayor Pessanti, our senior class, they've been to three Final Fours. Our seniors now have bookend titles, several of them won the title as freshmen in 2013 and now again in 2016. So a record of 77, 17, and 7 over four years between those. We did that for the program. It's the only reason I remember that. I do it for them every year. So these seniors, the senior class has been leader among us, and what they've accomplished is quite amazing with a state runner-up and two championships and missing their fourth Final Four and penalty kicks to Flag of Palm Coast their junior year, or sophomore year. So they're two years ago in 2014. Last year, we lost to St. Thomas Aquinas in the finals. So a very accomplished senior class, and they've just paved the way for our underclassmen now to continue trying to be as successful as possible in years to come.
So the underclassmen have quite the legacy to follow.
Absolutely.
Are they up to it?
Absolutely.
Excellent. Now, where are the seniors? Who's the seniors? Raise your hand. All righty, so now I guess everyone's going off to a school of their choice, right? So why don't I go up and down the list? Where are you going?
Undecided.
Undecided.
Undecided. UF.
UF, all right. Where are the A-1s? Now, you see that gentleman right there? That's our box and rec director. Don't hold it against him. He's a Seminole.
Not a senior.
Not a senior. Where are my seniors? Raise your hand. Down here.
Nova Southeastern University.
Doctor?
Medical. Physical therapy.
Physical therapy. Look at you. You got, that's a doctorate degree now, right?
Yes.
My sister's one, but she got in when it was a master's program.
UCF.
Go Knights! Where are the Knights? Any other seniors? Nope. All righty, well, and where's she going? Oh, well, you see, you do have one Seminole, Drew. One. But anyway, ladies, it is an incredible accomplishment. Some of you have had in here before. It's from the entire city council who's behind you, and we're going to get together and get a big group picture. You just make us all so proud. You make the city so proud, and the accomplishments are outstanding. We read what you've done. So now, underclassmen, are you up to the task? We're going to have you back here one or two more times, we hope? All righty, well, ladies, big congratulations. Let me see if any of the council members have any words for you, and then we'll line up. You've all done this before. We'll get in the center. We'll get a big picture. We'll have the city seal in the back, and then we'll get it emailed over to Scott. Councilman, anything for him? Yes, let's all kind of line up, ladies, right here in the center, and then we'll kind of get behind you. Councilwoman Drago and I will not be seen, so. All righty, now, just, Coach, as you're getting them all lined up, I just had something whispered in my ear. Shhh. Wait, how do they do that in elementary school? Right? Does that work in high school? No? Anyway, hang on, guys. Hang on, hang on. I just got told something whispered in my ear, which wasn't on my cheat sheet. There's a coat of the year in this audience. Isn't that true, Coach Scott? Soccer Coach of the Year? Congratulations, Coach. All right, let me find the shortest girl back here so you can kind of, that's not going to work. I'll go over here. Now, any of the moms and dads, I mean, just come on out and get your pictures. Got them all? All righty, Drew, just hang on one second, ladies. We're going to go up top. Mr. Always is going to be up there in the crow's nest in a second. We'll take a picture down. That way, you get the whole council chambers. Yeah, in a couple of days, they'll be loaded up to the website. I'm sure Gail will put this out on social media. Gail, can you get this picture from Drew and put it out on social media? All righty, ladies, there's Mr. Bow up top. All right, one big round of applause for these young ladies. And a thank you to all the parents who came down this evening. You've got great kids. What about they did? It won't tell you. There we go. That emptied the place out. Always does. Maybe. All righty. Now, that's exciting, isn't it, folks? That's what we like to see. All right, moving along, we're up to item number two, which is the approval of the minutes from March 7th, 2016. I'd like to entertain a motion to do so.
Don't move.
Motion second. Any discussion?
No.
Nope. Hearing none, call to vote. All in favor of the motion to adopt the minutes signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving along, we're up to the public. Kind of important in the meeting, this is the time for the public to come forward and take three minutes to speak to any item that is either on the agenda in consent or not on the agenda. I do have a couple of written requests. I'll call them in order. Well, actually, you're up. I'm sorry. Come on up. And you are?
I'm Joel Lykem, 818 Orangewood Garden Grove.
All righty, first one's Joel Lykem, and Barbara, you caught the address?
818 Orangewood Drive.
Don't worry. She got it.
Thank you. Just going to count on my three minutes?
Thank you. No.
Okay.
Wait, just hand that out, up to the microphone, then we'll, there's a whole process here.
Okay. All right. I live at 818 Orangewood Drive. I'm at the bottom of Woodcrest Way, and I'm speaking about item 3167-16, which is the award of a design service regarding drainage and pantacy ditch piping. While I am pro this project in general, my property is affected by some drainage problems in the area, and I'm going to make this succinct. If you look down at the top, there are two photographs of a drain at inlet at 984 Woodcrest and 818 Orangewood. Some years ago, that was closed off because of flooding at 818 Orangewood. The outflow, excuse me, from Woodcrest, which starts at about 50 or 55 feet above sea level, was going into that property, and that property, what I'm told, was supposed to be a retention pond at one time, but then they don't look alive. So the folks of 818 were flooding. The city went, without doing any engineering, plugged up those two inlets. Those inlets are not connected to the storm sewer system, which the closest connection is at Orangewood and Palmetto, and that is reflected in the ETM study. There was a proposal for $18,000 worth of engineering, which would be part of this ETM project, as had included, to engineer a solution to connect up that drainage to the storm sewer. For some reason, and although I've had discussion with staff since October, this work is not included in the ETM work order that is going to be decided this afternoon. So I am protesting that this work order needs to include the work described in Area 1 Woodcrest Way, Orangewood Drive. Without getting into more of this too much, there is a detachment that shows my property and its position from the outfall of Woodcrest, and there's about a 20-foot drop from the top of Woodcrest Way into my backyard. The water falls on six properties, not just mine, not just 818 Orangewood. So with that, I am encouraging staff to include the work order, the work that was described by ETM, in the design effort. I was told by staff that they had some alternative idea, which is totally contrary to the ETM work order, and it's based, I think, on some faulty information. So I will leave it at that.
Thank you. Next written request I have is from Barry Kamak. How are you tonight, sir? Just name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Barry Kamak. I live at 835 Palmetto Street here in Oviedo. Thank you for your time. The reason I'm here tonight is I just need some assistance from the council members because we have new development from Taylor Morrison on Lake Charm Drive across from the Preserve of Lake Charm, and they're not following the rules that have been set down by this council. I talked to Mr. O'Rourke at the very beginning of this project, and he laid out the rules regarding start times, traffic flows, who to call if there's a problem.
I might be able to help you. Do we have an email today? The chief is on top of the whole entire thing, but please continue.
Well, the problem is, is there seems to be an absolute arrogance on the part of Taylor Morrison and Blue Ox. When I spoke to them on Friday, Blue Ox, after they tore down the cable line, which put our entire subdivision and the Meadows, as well as the state of Lake Charm, we had no cable for six and a half hours, no anything. Blue Ox said that there's absolutely no way that anybody can shut them down because they have a permit. Now, Mr. Cobb had asked me, Mr. Cobb is very nice, very, very nice, but I emailed him and asked for a shutdown. Obviously, they're not going to follow the rules. I mean, they'd start work early. I have videos of a trailer blowing through the stop sign at Lake Charm and Panther Street, but Lieutenant Lynch says he can't use that because he wasn't there to witness it. I mean, they actually went through the stop sign with a 30-some-foot trailer. Trucks are using Lake Charm Drive heading north, and they're not supposed to. You have signs up there that say, "No construction vehicles allowed." Now, according to Russ from Blue Ox, they hired dumb-as-rocks people, so obviously, they can't read. This is not my issue or the residency. This is the city council's issue. They issued the allowance for this development to be done, and I'm asking for help. So far, Mr. Cobb did respond to my email, but he said, "As a last resort, we would do a work stop." Well, what is a last resort? You know, if you have a semi-trailer 30-some-foot blowing through a stop sign, does somebody need to get hurt first? So I'm asking you. Also, I'm finding out that the city council's policies, although it says, "No construction vehicles," they can still have construction trucks, meaning subcontractors, enter Lake Charm Drive from north to, or from south to north. Now, there's three bus stops along this road. Now, merchant council will rethink this. I doubt very much these contractors are going to stop at every stop sign. It is a windy road. Three bus stops. I urge you to please rethink this and make it, "No construction vehicles of any kind allowed on Lake Charm Drive," because now we're looking at hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of vehicles over roughly a two-year period. Alex said from Taylor Morrison that they're going to be working here. So we need to make sure that we make it a safe environment for all residents that are currently there. So that is why I'm here tonight, to speak to you and ask you to please help me and our residents to get this resolved. Thank you very much.
No problem, Barry. As I said, there was an email sent this morning. I forwarded it to the chief. I forwarded it to Sean. I forwarded it to staff. It was the first that I know, I think that I have heard of it, and I'm sure the council, and I can assure you, they're going to be all over it. We had this issue at MNI, and we took care of it.
Well, thank you very much for your time. Have a nice evening. Thank you.
Mr. Cobb, can you ensure that this issue is taken care of?
Oh, yes, sir. We're on.
And if it does mean red tagging them until they get the message, just go right ahead and do it.
We've discussed it as far as when we feel that a red tag's going to be warranted, and so we have a plan in place.
All right, so Mr. Kamak's not going to come back to us in two weeks and say, "Nothing's been done."
I hope not.
So do I. Thank you. Bobby, as far as the drainage plan goes for, I'm sorry, I forgot your name. I apologize.
Joel Mr. Living.
For Joel, Joe, you guys, can you come on up here a second? I know we're letting out the contract for design and engineering. Can we just, with the consensus of council, of course, just make sure that this issue is addressed? I know it's always been a problem up there with drainage, and I know, and I know we're up there taking care of it now.
We've had several instances similar in the past where we have in-house staff take care of this separately from projects. I have a very limited budget on this project, and I already had to beat down the consultant just to get it where it is. So I want to move forward with this project, but we can handle this one separately.
Okay, so we can get this issue taken care of, so.
We're going to address it, yes.
Yeah, because I mean, I've seen those inlets up there, and I don't know the whole story. I remember Charles Smith explaining it to me once, many years ago, but the story that Joe said tonight had something to do with a pond or something that was supposed to be there that was never built or something. All right, so you'll be on top of it for Mr. Living. Council, okay with that?
Yep.
Yes? Thank you, Bobby. All right, that is all the written requests I have this evening. Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to address council? Seeing none, I am going to close the public comment and move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda tonight are items four through 13. What is the pleasure of council?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? With council's consent, I'd like to pull item 11 and just make it item 13A for a brief Any others?
No.
Let's see here. Oh, that number seven's got to get pulled. No, I'm only teasing. We'll leave number seven alone. All right, anything else?
No, sir.
Nope. All righty, so the motion on the table is to approve the consent agenda, making item number 11, item 13A. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, item number 13A, which is the old item 11, resolution number 3169-16. Mr. Cobb, would you just give us a brief introduction on that?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for the city council to approve a memorandum of agreement with the Florida Department of Transportation for roadway improvements within city right-of-way. The FDOT proposes to construct certain improvements for State Route 417, widening from just south of the Orange County/Seminal County line to north of State Route 434. A portion of the project improvements are to be constructed within the city's right-of-way, including the widening of bridges over Winter Springs Boulevard. My understanding is that they need to use the city right-of-way for staging primarily. In order for the DOT to utilize our right-of-way, the city must enter into an agreement with them. The DOT will be responsible for any cleanup and any restoration of the city right-of-way. The staff has reviewed the agreement and recommends approval. It's recommended that the city council adopt resolution number 3169-16.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Council, the reason why I pulled this one is the use of the right-of-way on most circumstances wouldn't be any issue to us. The one problem I do have with the agreement is that, A, Seminole County's not completely on board with this widening just yet. Seminole County has their own set of issues with the Florida Department of Transportation, and they are negotiating certain things with them. I would like to entertain a motion to table this item for, well, let's table it for about 10 or 12 weeks, let's say. We'll just pick a date in the future. Send a letter to the county and letting them know that the city of Oviedo has not approved this. We'd like to join them in their negotiations and discussions because there's one thing that the expressway authority was supposed to give the city of Oviedo that they promised us when they were building this road, and that is no toll between 434 and Red Bank. And they're going to improve the road, and they're going to change the road, and they want to use our right-of-way for staging, whatever they want to use it for, that's all fine, but now's the chance for us to take a little bit of a stand and get that put in there. I mean, that toll's a dollar right now, so instead of folks coming down 417, we're all going down 434, cutting through Winter Springs Boulevard, and so on and so forth. So with the consensus of council, I'd like to table this until, I don't know, September 19th, I guess, is the meeting date, just for the time being. Draft a letter off to the chairman of the Seminole County Commission and let them know of what we did and why we did it, and let's see if we can join with them in our grievances with the transportation authority and see if they're going to move forward with this. At least, we can get that improvement that was promised to the citizens 25 years ago when they were planning it.
Right.
Take a motion.
Well, it's just, I just need, I just said I'd like you to entertain a motion.
I can see. I know we need a motion to table it. Need a motion to table it until September, do you have the date? First meeting in September?
Point of order.
I'm sorry.
I think I asked for a motion, I asked to entertain a motion to table it, so why isn't that not a motion? No, I'm just curious. I don't care.
Can you make a motion?
No, no, I can't make a motion, but I asked, I asked if you could entertain a motion. Go ahead, just move ahead. Go ahead, move forward, move forward. It's fine. Make a motion.
Isn't that what you just made, Steve?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll second it.
Okay, whatever.
All right, motion to table until September 19th. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion?
No.
Is there consensus to draft the letter up to Seminole County Commission?
Yes.
Motioner?
Yes.
Seconder? All righty, so that is now part of the motion. All in favor of the motion to table and draft the letter, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving on, we're up to public hearings. Item number 14, ordinance number 1635. Let's just pull up there. Mr. Group, can you read that resolution by title only for us, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance of the city of Oviedo, Florida, amending the official zoning map to change the zoning district of approximately 0.25 acres located at 267 Wilson Avenue, approximately 800 feet south of Geneva Drive, from Seminole County Residential R1 to City of Oviedo Single and Two-Family Residential R2, providing for legislative fines and intent, implementing actions, non-codification, separability conflicts, and an effective date. That's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Group. Mr. Cobb, can you enlighten us?
Thank you, Mayor. The subject property is located at 267 Wilson Avenue in the city. The property was annexed into the city in 2008, and at that time, it was assigned a future land use designation of medium-density residential. However, it was not assigned a zoning district. The purpose of this request is to assign the property with the R2 zoning district. It's recommended that city council adopt the zoning map amendment based on the following: The R2 zoning district is consistent with the property's medium-density residential future land use designation. The R2 zoning district is also compatible with the future land uses and zoning districts of the surrounding adjacent properties. The subject property meets the lot standards for the R2 zoning district, and there are no additional capital investments that would be needed beyond what is already approved in the city's comprehensive plan. The Land Planning Agency conducted a public hearing on February 9, 2016, and thereat recommended adoption of ordinance number 1635. It's recommended that city council conduct a public hearing and adopt ordinance number 1635.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. What is the pleasure of council on ordinance number 1635?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1635?
Second.
Motion second. Councilman Schenk, anything?
Just cleaning up. Feel good?
Deputy Mayor, pardon me. Councilman Britton?
Good.
Don't worry, I'll get that straight, just in time for you to pass it on, so. I'm sorry, Councilman Britton, you good?
I'm good.
Councilman Henken?
Yes.
Councilwoman?
I'm good.
You're good? All righty, hearing, no discussion on the item. The motion on the table is to adopt. All in favor?
Mayor, we need to do a public hearing.
Oh.
Before you take a vote.
All righty, I do not have that in here. I do apologize. I will open it up. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak for or against? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. Do you want us to restate the motion?
No, sir. I don't think we need to.
Motion on the table is to adopt. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving along, we have no first readings. We have resolution, let's see, rough number 16, resolution number 3165-16, mid-year budget adjustment. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request to approve a mid-year budget amendments that involve adjustments to the revenues and expenditures of the funds within the budget. The financial policies of the city require the council to approve budget amendments for all inter-fund transfers, regardless of the amount, increases or decreases in appropriated fund balances, and for any increase in the total approved appropriation of a level of a fund. The budget amendment provided with resolution 3165-16 amends the fund totals of the affected funds. It changes, it also approves the changes within each of the affected funds and reflects the total increase or decrease to the fund in the amendment or the change to the revenues, the expenditures, the inter-fund transfers, and in the appropriated fund balance. Ms. Hayes has prepared a presentation explaining the mid-year request, so I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Hayes and, for her presentation.
Yes? Okay.
Robin, I will call you. I have to leave for an appointment that I cannot miss, so I read it, it's good, and march on, but I have to, I have to get somewhere quick.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. We'll load up this presentation one second.
Is this what we saw at the workshop the other evening? No.
No, sir.
Okay.
We discussed a few of the items that are in the exhibit.
No worries, just curious.
But this is just the mid-year review that's required by statute for us just to go over with you as the council, other than the adjustments that I presented to you. Okay. Cute. So, within the...
Did Gail make this PowerPoint?
Yes, she did.
Good job, Gail.
She's over here. She's actually...
There you are.
And what we're going to do, we're going to go over the revenues just in general, again, some expenditures on the general fund, just to give you an idea of where we state, where we should be at. At this point in time, pretty much, we're looking at five months of data. I know it's April, but when we turned the information in, it was the end of February, so we don't have a lot of the March data in here, but we do have approximately five full months of data in here. We're going to go through the expended amount, the revenues and expenditures, we'll go through those for all the funds, including enterprise funds, quickly, and then just give you a synopsis of where we are, where we're at at this point in time. So, some of the revenues that we look at during this process, so we look at utility service taxes, and those are just some of the revenues that we receive, you know, some of our substantial revenues on the general fund side, and we've just kind of given you an idea of what those might include. So, there's your taxes and so forth, and they're through October through February. In some months, we only have three months that have posted, in some cases, but in most cases, we have about four months. Franchise fees are posting five months, so those are up to date, and at this point in time, we're pretty much on track based on whether it's at 25% or 50%. We're based on a middle road, on track with receiving those revenues. State share, most of those, we have approximately five deposits. A couple of them, we only had three deposits, but they're on track current based on last year's estimates from the state, so we're okay at this point in time with those. Communication service tax, we only showed three deposits, and that's pretty normal. They're usually a couple of months behind by the time we start receiving them, and then we, they do make them up. Obviously, we receive them, Jerry then posts them well until November of the following year, and we repost back, so we clean them up as we go through the process. But that information is out there and we're on track based on what we estimated the budget to be. Half-cent tax, three deposits also. Again, we're about where we expect to be from the state, and it's on track based on the estimate given to us by the state, which we do use, but we also estimate that just a little bit of a reduction in case all those funds don't come in, so we're on track there. And the avalorm, which is our, majority of our revenue in the general fund as a whole anyway, and we're about 92%, 92%, 93% of those funds collected. Again, those don't reflect March, so we'll see a large deposit come in, hopefully sometime the end of April for the March, which should clean us up to close to about 95%. And we budget that at 96% if you recall. We present the budget each year. So, that's just a rough summary, and again, Gail's put us together a wonderful chart to just kind of give us an idea of the budget that you'll see in green and the actual in blue, so just to give the alignment of each of the major categories. These are the same categories we report in the prospectus for you, so you see the quarterly prospectus, same information's reported in that. Miss Ma'am?
We'd like seeing blue less than green.
That's... So, our percentage, avalorm taxes are at 91%, roughly. Other taxes, which will be your utility taxes and those type things, and franchise fees, 32%. Again, when you're looking at three and four postings, the percentage is lower, so that's what that reflects. The same with intergovernmental. Transfers, those are based on where we're at in the year, so Jerry's group in the finance division, they make those transfers every month at the end of the closing, so those reflect February and maybe a few in March already. That's why this reflects a 41%, and those transfers may go to other funds that the general fund is funding, and there'll be numerous of those. Charges for services, so those are any of the services that we actually have a fee for, that we present to you the fee-based schedule each year. Most of those are going to be following the charges for services. Miscellaneous revenues or donations, could be a donation, it could also be insurance funds, it could be miscellaneous things as stated. Fines and forfeitures, those will include some of the fines, but a lot of the forfeiture dollars that we receive from the police department and/or some of those funds that are general fund. A lot of those are special revenue funds, but there's a few of the general fund. And then license permits, business license and county, we actually received some funds this year from Seminole County, which were really up this year based on past year, so obviously, some of the building and some of the things that are going on and development services, which you're seeing from them as they present to you the agenda items each The general fund expenditures overall spent around 42.5% of the annual budget at five months. There again, it's on track. Most of the departments, if you'll notice, are on a typical pattern. Keep in mind that we encumber budgets in the beginning of the year for the entire year a lot of times, so some of the departments that seem to be, that they've spent more, looks like they've spent more, their expenditure pattern is a little higher, it's because they haven't encumbered their contracts. It could be an annual contract for engineering services, it could be for tree services, you know, tree trimming, it could be for the mowing, those type things. So, they're not always exactly the dollars only spent, they'll also include encumbrances. So, if we'll go to the next page, please, ma'am. And we put these in categories this time, so we gave you general government, but everyone that's not part of the police department, the fire department, the public works, the recreation park, or just reserve. So, we just kind of lumped everyone else into one just to make it simple for you to see, because we're all administrative that support those other departments, so... But we're on track about where we should be at this point in time, and we'll bring that back to you at the end of the year when we look at year-end adjustments. So, the general fund governmental services at 44%, police department 42%, fire and rescue 40%, public works at 46%, and recreations at 33%. Again, public works has a lot of engineering services and contracts in general, so they tend to be a little higher than the others. Utility funds. So, we're just going to run through those very quickly for you and just give you an idea of where we're at. Again, we looked at these from a budget perspective and an actual perspective, and we looked at the expenditures the same way, so that you'll see the utilities, actuals, and the budget, and we put those by the individual departments, so that if you had a concern for any one department, you can look at those individually. But again, we're on track for those with nothing standing out that we need to look at at this point in time. And then, we looked at the individual departments on expenditure. We have wastewater collections at 24%, water production at 24%, the wastewater plant at 50%, water production at 24%, billing and customer service 48%, water distribution 43%, administration 29%, cross-connect at 40%, and reclaimed at 35. And a lot of these departments, again, have contracts, so they're not all going to be level spending at five months, they're going to vary across the board. But everything is on course as far as budgeted items, and actually, it looks very promising at this point in time. I believe even to probably be with low, low their budget levels in a lot of cases. The contracts are a little below level, current level. Stormwater, we have charges for services. We thought we would show you the revenue coming in so that you could see the alignment of the charges for services on the budget versus the actual, and it is on, there again, it's based on billing, so the billing is more or less a February to the 1st of March timeframe. Again, I have to do these reports back in the middle of March, so it's about that timeframe. So, that's about right for the charges for services, and then we've used very little fund balance in this one and very little interest in that one, so, at this point in time. But it is on track to meet budgetary requirements. And we just kind of give you a quick update on the impact fees. The funds expected for recreation, transportation, police, and fire are still at this point in time slightly below average, but better than last year. We do look a little better, we can see the growth, you can see it in the numbers coming in this year, so I'm a little hopeful that those numbers will come in a little better this year than the past years to help us out on the debt side of that process, but they're still slightly below. Stormwater fees are on target to meet the budgetary projections, and we don't expect to bring you any shortage of those. So, overall, we felt like that we were meeting the six-month perspective, even though we're looking at it at a five-month time period, but we're on track. And staff would like to recommend that we approve resolution 3165-16 that reflects the mid-year adjustments.
Oh, great job, Rob. Robin, let me see if I have any questions.
Okay.
No.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselman Britton, anything?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gail.
Yes, Gail. Master PowerPoint skills there again. All righty. Any other questions on the resolution for staff? Mr. Cobb, you have anything to add?
No, sir.
Before we vote on it? All righty, just need a motion.
Make a motion to adopt resolution number 3165-16?
Second.
Motion in multiple seconds. Any other questions? Hearing none, call the vote? I'm sorry.
Just a great job to Rob and the staff, putting that together.
And Gail.
And Gail, for putting the presentation together.
All righty. Motion on the table is to adopt. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All righty. Moving right along, we're up to our discussion items. We have none this evening. City managers' report. Mr. Cobb, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a few things. This Thursday, at 11:30 at the Cultural Center, the Chamber of Commerce will have their State of the County address. This Friday, also at the Cultural Center, is Leadership Seminole, their classes, the Leadership Seminole class is doing a gala, a celebration of the arts. If you're interested, they are selling tickets. It is a fundraiser, and Ms. Hayes is the city's representative this year. If you're interested in attending, please see her. Saturday, the 16th...
What time on Friday?
Six o'clock. On Saturday, April 16th, we have the Kids' House Gala. It's also at 6:00 PM at UCF. And then Arbor Day is Saturday, May 7th, at 9:00 here at City Hall, so I just wanted to update you on some events that are coming up...
Great.
...in the next few weeks.
Well, we look forward to all those, as do, I'm sure, all the citizens, especially Arbor Day. Right, Keith? Keith has a forest in his backyard from Arbor Day over the years. Anything else, Mr. Cobb?
No, sir, that is it.
Mr. Groot?
I just, I have nothing to say to you, thank you.
All righty. Counselman Henken is not here. Counselwoman Drago?
Unfortunately, I won't be able to make the two events, Thursday and Friday. I'll be out of town all weekend, leaving on Thursday, so I'm sorry, I will miss it. I don't have any other report.
All righty. Counselman Britton, you're up.
I just have one item. I've got a conflict on Wednesday, two places I need to be at one time. One is Calno and one is an event downtown, and I'm not going to be able to make Calno, and I wondered if anyone would be interested in going and cross-pollinating with some other elected officials. It's in Longwood.
What time?
This Thursday?
Six o'clock.
Wednesday?
Wednesday, yes.
I got a 5:30.
This Wednesday?
Yeah.
What time is it?
Six o'clock.
Maybe?
Yeah, I can do it.
Okay.
Okay. I will notify Chairman Mahaney and let him know.
Oh, he's not the chairman? You're not the chairman anymore?
I'm not the chairman anymore.
Oh, okay.
Patty Mahaney is now the chairman.
Oh, that means Barbara doesn't have to... Oh, look at Barbara down there doing the happy dance.
Barbara is giddy.
Just so everyone knows, whoever the chairman of Calno is, their clerk has to take the minutes and keep the minutes and keep the agenda and keep everything else, so our clerk, on top of all the duties she does here, every time we take on a board like this, more work gets piled on that office.
I'll tell you something funny about Patty Mahaney is, I never called people to RSVP. Barbara would send out a note, and if they didn't RSVP, they didn't. I've gotten two emails from Patty saying, if she doesn't hear from us, she's going to call us personally, so...
I believe that, too.
She's going to take the bull by the horns on this group.
Good for her. Anything else?
That's it.
All righty. I have no report this evening, coming back off a spring break. Deputy Mayor, you're up.
I'll remind you guys, do you have anything about the police banquet I wasn't able to attend?
That was great.
Oh, yeah, we forgot all about that.
Go ahead, please, give a...
It was exceptional as always.
Superman Mattingly took away the prizes.
He did. Detective Mattingly, Officer of the Year.
Talk about Batman. How many did he get, chief? Awards?
Five or six.
Chief, you have one exceptional police force. That's all I'm going to say. They all do an exceptional job, and some of the stories and the awards of merit and such that were given out were impressive, so, great job.
Why don't you talk about Fireman Josh, too?
That's right. Fireman Josh, chief, why don't you come on up and give us all the particulars on that one? Because I don't know Josh's last name.
We don't want to violate HIPAA either, so give us the...
Yeah, 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 that's true. We've got those HIPAA laws.
But it's a cool story.
Deputy Mayor, we'll get to you in a minute, don't worry. I spurned it, I'm good. Spun it off.
We'll be bringing the Police Officer of the Year and Firefighter of the Year to you in May as well for council recognition.
Great.
Yes, we had one of our employees and his partner, and I'm still doing research on that partner, I think it was a rather new employee, but they had transported an Oviedo resident to a hospital, very elderly, and the gentleman is also very elderly, the husband of, in fact, he's 98 years old.
Awesome.
I first met him when he walked in fire administration, and he submitted 15 names for the veterans tribute, and he would have had 10 more if we'd gone back to the Civil War. But anyways, he was just thrilled. He suffered from a particular condition and needed food on a particular timetable for breakfast, and he did not have the ability to do that because he was with his wife on the way to the hospital. Well, they went to the cafeteria and got the special dietary meal that he needed, and when he tried to pay him for them, they said, no, we're not, we're not taking your money, of course, but I was just blessed that that's part of our representation of both police and fire.
Totally spontaneous, very commendable.
Yes, thank you.
And you know what, chief, that meant so much to that gentleman, that he actually took the time, he typed a letter. That was a typewriter, that letter that was sent to me.
Yes.
And signed it, so it really made an impression.
And not a misspelled word or anything.
I'm sorry, chief?
Not a misspelled word or anything.
No, 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 I can't even do that with Word in spell check, so it was quite impressive. Anything else that Councilman Britton and I should bring up, Council, Deputy Mayor?
Well, you could, you know, the palm tree celebration, they celebrated the 20th anniversary this past week, they had a great celebration, you know, local guy is doing very well, expanding up in Sanford also in the past year, but they've had a great celebration. They also took in donations, food, canned food for hope at the same time, and had a really nice event downtown, so it was a nice event to have that they put on. A lot of nice people there. And I think that was, trying to look if that was all the events I had, that's all the events. I've got one more thing, if you can indulge me for a second, on upcoming Orange County, they've got a meeting where they're looking at a property, and one of the things is a bridge that crosses over from McCullough. And, you know, 20 years ago, that was proposed for Live Oak Reserve coming in backdoor to Live Oak Reserve to actually prepare for traffic, not only for us, for Live Oak Reserve that it would occur, but the area as it occurred. Now, the areas we know has, Chiliote has grown, North Orange County has grown, and provided, I'll say, our biggest complaint from our residents is the traffic that comes down Mitchell Hammock, traffic comes down Lockwood every morning, and as we know, at least 40 to 45% of that traffic is born outside of the city limits. What I'm asking is if council will put together a letter to ask Orange County to work on doing that and to make it a straight shot versus any kind of putt that they're looking at. I know they're talking about a couple different things, but, I mean, many times, it's been, again, proposed a couple of times, but...
So build it as post Buckley Johnson design.
Yeah, PBSJ, yeah, PBSJ. That way, like I said, it'll cut across straight to the, basically, the borderline, I believe it's right at the borderline, Orange County, Seminole County, on a straight shot. Not referencing anything else about the development or the things that, you know, the ride of the polls, I have no comment to wish upon them, that's their decisions to work upon. But to offer, we see the residual from the traffic that they're proposing in the area, and also, that's in Seminole County. It's not just Orange County, it's the growth that's been out there. I mean, we see the same problem up Geneva Drive, and the growth in Geneva that comes through. And again, we get complaints from people in Geneva, from people in the city that say, you know, your traffic's a problem. Well, the roads, those two roads specifically, Lockwood and Mitchell Hammock, are built by us, they're our local roadways, and they were never designed with the intent of a state or county roadway to handle it.
They've become regional.